This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. This is the meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. My name is Steve Emming, President of the Board of Trustees. And I call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is a roll call. Judy Lance?
Here.
Maggie Mato?
Here.
Joe Heinrichs?
Here.
Malavika Shukandi?
Here.
And let's see, Tom Engelmann is not here yet. Hoping he'll be joining us. Craig Cooper, Sylvia Roba, and Amanda Mato are excused, unable to be here today. And I'm present, so that gives us a total of five board members present. We have a core. Also like to introduce members of the staff and guests. Library Director Amy Grosskopf, HR Operations Manager Jennifer Williams, Development Director Tracy Moore, Marion McGuinness, Third Ward Alterperson and City Council Liaison to the library, and also Angie Hammond, Youth Services Library Assistant. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I still move, Steve. Malavika.
Okay, thank you, Malavika. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. A call for the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Hearing and seeing no one for public comment, we'll move on. Next item is reports and communications. First item there is Friends. Amy, is anything from the Friends to report?
They participated in the trunk or treat event that was held at the Fairmont Branch, and it sounded like everybody really enjoyed it, and they were overwhelmed with the number of people who were there, which was close to 1,000 or over 1,000.
They ran out of treats?
Yeah, so they did not run out of treats. I'm not sure how they managed that. But they also did purchase some stickers about the Friends that they put on, like at least 200 of the candy bars that they handed out. So hopefully some good awareness from at least parents who might have been looking at their kids' candy that the Friends were involved in that. So they are also looking at working on putting together a more formal budget process for the organization on an annual basis. So I think that will be helpful to them as well. So that's one of the things that they're working on in terms of like an operating budget. So they, you know, looking at past averages of income coming in to set priorities for how they want to spend.
Good. Thank you very much. Always appreciate the Friends. Next item under reports and communications is committee reports. Let's see, finance, Tom isn't here. Personnel, Craig and Amanda right here. They're all up there. Next advocacy, Malavika, anything from the advocacy?
Something to, again, go back and thank Friends and Tracy and Brittany is the Hash Giving Tuesday coming up. And it was such fun. I put in my, I mean, I shared it with people, and people have been asking, friends have been asking, my friends, that is, have been asking about it. So thank you, Tracy, Brittany, for the Hash Giving Tuesday, Read to Babies thing that's happening. A bit of good news, we talked to, I had a conversation with Dr. Jay Klitsch, and they allowed us to be in the freshman orientations that are happening at Danforth School District. The first one, I went along with Amber last evening. We had a lot of interest from parents, students who were going in and out after the freshman orientation. We also had quite a few of these young students, as well as families, signing up for library membership. And it was beautiful to share with parents about how, you know, we have hotspots to check out and our techno library. And Amber was just fantastic. I just was there to help her with it this evening. Amber and I think Allison will go to West for the orientation, a freshman orientation. And tomorrow is going to be at North where Amber and Michelle is going to go. So it was really wonderful to be a part of it. And the school district has asked if Danforth Public Library would be regulars coming in every year for this orientation, and we were just overjoyed when they themselves asked us. So that was one. And just to share with you all, tomorrow, which is, I think it's Wednesday, November 17th, is the DEI Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee meeting on which I represent all of you, the board, as a liaison. So I will be reporting back after a meeting that's going to happen tomorrow. And there are lots of exciting outreach things that we are discussing, something which I would keep for the upcoming meeting in December. So thank you. That's all from me.
Okay. Thank you, Malavika. Any questions for Malavika?
Yes, please. Any questions?
Okay. Moving on. Next item on our agenda under reports and communications is director's report. Amy?
Not too much, other than what was in their report. Just a quick information on the first item in terms of the financed project here at the main library to finish off, kind of the last big project as part of the renovation. Those bins are due on Friday. So in terms of the timing, we'll have to take a look at that. We might want to have a special board meeting to approve the selected tender. But then also as an FYI, if the bid amounts come in over $50,000, that will also need to go to council for approval. So we'll want to take a look at what that schedule is as well, so we can hopefully move forward on that. So just kind of like I said, an FYI and how that process will go. Otherwise, I think everything is fairly self-explanatory. As Steve indicated, Mr. Landry indicated he wasn't going to attend the meeting today. He didn't feel quite prepared to do so at this point in time. So and if we do end up hearing any extra noises down here, just an FYI, then our dreams are being snaked as we speak, so.
Can we have a tour?
Yeah. No, you don't want a tour.
Any questions for Amy on the director's report? See, I mentioned that Tom Engelmann has joined the meeting. Thank you, Tom. Okay. Next item under reports and communications is council liaison.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you today, but I'm doing a lot of plate juggling these days, a lot of projects. So I needed to do this from home so I could keep rocking and rolling. So in any case, just a couple of things. Several things are, one big thing in front of council, of course, is the flood plan. The proposal is, final proposal is out, the recommendations. And that's important, you know, for the city and for the library. I mean, it's located downtown as well, although not, isn't impacted by flooding, but certainly getting to it might be for people. And so this plan really looks at the city in five different areas. There's phasing. It's probably going to be a couple of decades before it's done. But it looks at access through the city. It looks at different kinds of mitigation strategies that depending on where you are in the city and what level the water rises to or what level that area is at, it looks a lot at the sewer system and making sure that we have backflow valves where we need them so that we're not getting water coming back up through, which is what happens at many locations. So you're welcome to look at it. It has lots of good pictures. It's very comprehensive. But it's a very interesting document. So and one of the deliverables that staff had tried to give us was that it would be delivered to the sitting council where the work began, where the task force began. And so we should be, thank you, my coffee-delivering person. Sorry. So anyway, so that is happening. Now, the council will only have one cycle in December. And so we're in our last cycle in November this week and next. And then our only cycle in December, because December starts, you know, quickly, is December 1st and 8th, and we will not be in council until the new year. So just to let you know that. It's pretty typical that we have one cycle. It's unusual. It's that early in December. In any case, so the other thing, and Amy can talk about this more than me because she's, it's on her shoulders right now, I'm sure, is the city is going through its budgeting process for next year. The budget that starts in July 1st. And so staff members are certainly involved in doing the new budget work for their departments and everything. So that is ongoing. That will come council later, but those are, becomes part of our discussions. We have January meetings on Saturday. This year we'll have four instead of three. And so it will, but that will come to us, and that's where those discussions, because the budget has to be approved by state law way before, you know, in, I think, early March or something. So it's very early before the fiscal year starts. And so we're in good step for that. Just also, there will, for your information, and you're probably aware of this, there will be three new aldermen on city council. The first alderman actually joins us, would potentially join us before the end of the year. And that is the seat that Dr. Miller filled, the vacant seat in 7th. He temporarily filled. Derek Cornet was elected to that seat, and he is, he will take office. He is eligible to take office immediately. So Dr. Miller is no longer with us on the council. He's had his last, we did thank him for his service, and he was a great, he was a great person there for that. So Derek Cornet will be serving the 7th ward. There is a new alderman in 5th ward, and then it's Tim Kelly. And then in 4th ward, Ray Ambrose has retired, and the new alderman elected is Robbie Ortiz. So there will be new, there'll be new council people. That's certainly an opportunity for everybody at the library to, you know, let them know what a wonderful place the library is and all that. But maybe people that haven't had exposure to the library before. So that's really kind of everything I have. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Marion? I have one, Marion. When do the 5th and 4th ward aldermen take office?
So they would take office in January.
Okay.
So until then, until then, Ray Ambrose is the alderman in 4th ward. And then, and Matt Dorman is the alderman in 5th ward. So they stay till the end of the year, and then they're, they're, you know, and that would be probably the first week in January where we would have our first meeting. So they would be sworn in then. So it is after the new year.
Okay. Thank you. With Tom Engelmann joining the meeting, just want to swing back to see if there's anything in finance.
No, when you look at the budget comparison, you know, we're right on target in terms of we're a third of the way through the year. The budget is about a third of the way spent, so.
Sounds good. Okay, next item on the agenda, new business. First item there is discussion of the library policy and confidentiality policies. Amy, do you want to get us going on that?
Sure. So you have a redlined version of the policies. What we did was we, there was repetitive language in the confidentiality of library records policy that also appeared in the privacy policy. So as you looked at these, and both of them needed some updating and board review prior to the end of the year. So we decided to put them all just into one policy, so everything would be all together. So you'll see, just kind of going down where it's redlined, looking at, instead of talking about confidentiality of library records, to make that more broad, to include all library transactions. That would include reference questions, things like that that would come in. So that's a little bit more inclusive. And then we copied the language from the current confidentiality of library records policy into this. So that's the red that you see under that. Going down further, we wanted to add a section in, and this is, so this is Amy struggling with with Microsoft Office products, you know, so the spacing isn't really correct there. We wanted to add, though, a section in to specifically note that the library's social worker is a mandatory reporter under state law. And we wanted to make sure that people understood that that policy is not going to prevent the person in that position from fulfilling their obligations. So we added that piece in. On the second page, again, the red there was copied from the confidentiality of library records policy. And that talks about the fact that we do share the names of students who participate in programs such as the first or second grade library tours, and now the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. We will share those names of students. So for example, the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, kids who kind of graduate from the program and are entering kindergarten will simply share those names with the schools, and they will provide aggregate data to us to see whether or not those students are entering kindergarten more prepared to learn. So that's a way for us to measure whether or not our programs are having impact. But it also, that information is held then under the school's confidentiality policies, so it's not available to them. For some of the library tours, things like that, we report to the schools then names of students who have, say, checked out more than six items since their tour. So that they're, we know they're coming back to the library, they're using library resources, but we would never report what those titles are that they're reading. We just let the schools know that these are the kids that have come back after their tour. And again, then when they look at their reading scores, they just provide aggregate data back to us so we can measure the impact of those programs. So we feel pretty confident that that's, the school's confidentiality policy is just as strict as what we have. They're bound by a lot of laws, just as the library is covering it. So we feel comfortable with that, that change. I did add specifically the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program in there, even though we do talk about other special initiatives, just because that's going to be such a big emphasis that the library is going to be working on over the next few years. And then finally, under web server and electronic resource usage, a number of our third-party vendors, in order to use the resources, patrons need to set up an account often with some of these places, or they can do so as an option to make their lives more convenient. And we wanted to be clear about the fact that we do not share patrons' personally identifiable information with these third-party vendors. If they need to authenticate that their library user, they use their library card number, and that would be the only information. But they also may get an option from a vendor, say, for eBooks, for the eBook app and things like that, to set up an account, in which case the patron is voluntarily providing that information, their name, their email address, to the vendor. And once a patron does that, we're not responsible for that because they're covered then under the vendor's law or policy. So we wanted to just make sure that that was clear to patrons. So those are the updates that we are proposing to make to that policy. I didn't know if anybody has any other questions or concerns about it.
Questions, comments, concerns on the confidentiality and privacy policy? Okay, hearing and seeing done. Move on. We'll put that on a future agenda for approval.
So that'll be on December's agenda for a moment.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of the library exhibits policy. Thank you, Amy. Okay, go ahead.
So this policy covers exhibits that are done by library staff, but anybody in the community who might want to have an exhibit for whatever reason, whether it's, sometimes folks like to share their collectibles. Sometimes it's a local nonprofit who wants to, you know, draw attention to, say, American Heart Month or something like that. And we do have exhibit cases that are available for those situations. So this policy covers that. It's, I think some of the key things are that the exhibits need to support the library's mission and follow our intellectual freedom policies. And then people can't sell anything. So with the exception of the Friends, none of these items can be for sale. So we don't find ourselves doing little pop-up stores and things like that. So and then, of course, the fact that, you know, we're not going to be liable for damages. And if somebody brings something to be put on exhibit, and then they don't come and pick it up, we're not going to store it forever for them either. So and we don't have any recommended changes to the policy.
Any questions, comments, concerns about the exhibits policy?
Amy, I just have one quick, it's not a question, it's just for me to know. It's like, as you shared, that exhibits can be made by nonprofits, like, you know, if they have something to showcase. And it just comes to mind because, yes, appropriately so that they cannot sell. But, and this is a hypothetical question, for example, Figgy Art Museum or Patnem, let's say. We have passes for both of them that we check out at our library. If they have an exhibit about their museum and indirectly they put something about memberships and the costs of memberships, is, you know, the various levels of membership, would that be a sale?
No, I think, I think that would probably be okay.
Just an information, right?
It would just be information. Information. If we're encouraging people to, or if the exhibit is encouraging people to come or to show, you know, what they have there to encourage people to come visit, given the fact that we have those free passes available, we might give you information about that. But then also the fact that, you know, if you want to buy a membership, you could do that.
Okay. So I mean, they can just have, they can exhibit that, but of course they cannot sell it. They can just showcase it, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had a question as well. So do people ever, do people ever ask for this space for, to promote upcoming events? The appropriate upcoming events? Like in the, in the case of the Humber, for example, like our neighborhood tour, would that be an appropriate type of thing? Or has, is that what happens? Or, and the other question I had was sort of, what's the lead time for this typically?
Okay, so the, for your, for your first question, I don't know that anybody ever has advertised an event, but that certainly would fall within the guidelines. But the policy says that the application for the exhibit has to be completed and received at least 30 days prior.
Got it. Got it. Okay.
Couldn't you consider the BIC's porch party as an advertisement for the BICs?
Sure.
So yeah, so they do it?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing, move on. Put that one on the December agenda also. Next item, discussion of the December board meeting date and time. Third week of December, which we, when we usually meet, would be the week of Christmas. So just wanted to check with folks to see if they thought we should move that.
I'm, Steve, I'm open. I'm here in town. So any day is okay for me.
Okay.
I'm in town, but I probably won't be able to, I'm not sure if I can get away from the kiddos.
Oh, that's the other thing. People with kids.
That's true.
Okay.
But be it's go away, mom.
So I guess.
Maybe since we're missing three.
Yeah, we're missing three.
Send an email out instead?
Yeah, I'm going to check with the board members that weren't able to attend and see how they feel about it, and we'll see where we go from there. Okay. Next item, old business. Under old business, we have update and discussion on the director search. Where I get into that, just want to remind everybody confidentiality reminder as we're discussing this. Please do not mention names or locations or anything. Okay, so just to update on the schedule as it stands now. Good enough, top of my head. I think, I think, but by December 30th, Bradbury Miller expects to have contacted the candidates, the finalists, get their references and have checked those references. So expect to have that information by then.
You said December 3rd? November?
November 30th. And then December 1st and 2nd would be our interview times.
What time are those starting?
Time to be announced.
Good time, Kevin, definitely.
No, not in that. Yeah, that's, okay. So let's see. So this would ask that everyone review their paperwork for the finalists and get up to speed with that. One of the items we are trying to work through and set up is a meet and greet with the finalists. In the past, that's been, not only with the library, but also with other city departments, has been, you know, an open event where people could talk with the candidates. But given the times we're in now, we are looking to do that in a more virtual fashion. So what we're looking at is a session where the candidates would be asked to provide a, or give a, you know, a presentation, if you will, virtually. And then through, questions could be asked through the chat feature on Zoom or go-to-meeting or whatever format is used. And then Bradbury Miller would moderate those and pass them on to the candidates to answer those questions. And so in kind of talking this through with Bradbury Miller and with Jennifer and Amy, it seems like that would be workable, giving. it seems like that would be workable, giving, given our situation with COVID and not knowing whether that's going to be the same better or worse. So also, you know, that would, if we set that up now, that would give us an opportunity to not have to worry about any last-minute changes as, as opposed to that if we had decided we would actually have a face in-person meeting and then COVID got worse and we had to make last-minute changes. So this has that going for it also, doing it virtually. Also, and we, one, one thing that we've done in the past that we're looking for a way to do it is we used to have public comment cards where people could leave their comments about various candidates and how they felt about them or whatever. Looking for a way to do that, but that possibly could be maybe by, you know, I'm not exactly sure. But, but anyway, we're looking for a way to solve that. And I guess there are some possibilities of that. Perhaps we can have people, you know, email Bradbury Miller and do it that way or someone else. Let's see.
So when do you want questions by?
Oh, this, these would be questions that the people would submit virtually to the candidates from the public.
Right.
So, yeah, the, well, that would be live during the event. And let me see.
So wait a minute. I'm, I'm mixed up here because you're talking about this meet and greet with the public.
Yes.
And you're talking about our meeting.
No.
So neither.
Haven't, haven't talked about our meeting.
Okay, thank you, because I thought.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
Okay, so now just talking about the, a way to handle the meet and greet as opposed to, you know, a public wide-open event.
Would this occur prior to our December 1st and 2nd interviews?
Yes, this is, has been proposed anyway to be on Monday, the 29th. And again, virtual, so that would save, you know, people traveling, additional expenses that we would have for, you know, having to put candidates up in a hotel for extra time. And the time that's been, I guess, kind of tossed out for discussion would be like from 5:00 to 7:00 that evening. Jennifer, can you help me out? Is there anything I'm missing?
I think you, you gathered all of it.
Okay.
It's a confusing process, this, the virtual version.
And I apologize for stumbling through this, but this is late breaking. Like, as of last evening.
So the, the public meet and greet, who is expected to come there or to look at this?
Anybody from the public. We would hope that, you know, members of the council would be there, you know, city council to, you know, at least take, you know, watch the candidate's statements, you know, see who they are, hopefully they.
So they would get the, the link sent to them if they signed on to do it, or?
Yes, I guess that's one thing we haven't talked about.
So, yeah, the link would, I think, would be available like on our website, a little bit publicly. And then we will, anybody specific that we want to attend, we can just send them the link directly. But it's.
Okay. Oh, even if they don't sign up for it, you can still send them to people?
No.
No?
Just login. And then also the plan is to have in all of our locations, a Zoom going live there. So anybody that doesn't have technology access, that they can actually walk in and still view the same thing that other people can lobby to do at home.
Okay.
Okay.
Jennifer, I have a question, Jennifer. You, you said it, it will be at all locations. So people, if we advertise it on our social media platforms, people can come in and go out. Is that what you mean by that?
If they want to see all three candidates, they can stay the entire time, because they'll be back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so all three candidates will be there live at the same time?
They'll be virtually, not at the same time, so they can have.
Virtually, virtually, together, right?
Not together.
Oh, okay.
So on the Zoom, the first 30 minutes, they'll say start at 5:00, from 5:00 to 5:30 is candidate one, then the next candidate, then the next candidate.
Okay, so there will be three links sent to people for candidate one, candidate two, and candidate three, right?
Correct.
Okay, 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 okay. Thank you, Jennifer, thank you.
Okay. So continuing to work on that. Any other questions or comments, concerns?
Steve, last, last, last question, Steve. It, it would be like town hall then, right? Like, you know, you have the link, you click the link and they are there. And Bradbury Mueller is the Miller, excuse me, are the people who receive the questions through chat and they let the candidate know what the questions are.
Yes.
Going to work, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we will continue to develop that and keep you informed if there's any other, any change in the date or proposed time. And if, if there are any questions come up, please, please let me know. We'll address those as best we can as quickly as we can. Okay. Let's see. Next item on the agenda is discussion.
Listen, yeah. The actual interviews will be in person?
Yes, the actual interviews will be in person.
On the first and second?
Yes.
And we still don't know what time? Who sets that up?
We'll set that up, but, yeah, we'll, we'll be setting that up.
Okay. Wait for somebody to. Steve, one more question. Did you say when they can come or you just?
No, we'll, we'll arrange to have them here.
Yeah.
That time, let's just.
Okay.
Have to set it up. I mean, there may be some, there may have to be some interface on that.
Yeah.
Hopefully that people would get here the night before or whatever. I guess I would expect that.
Yes.
Yes, Mel, Mika, do you have a question?
No, no, you just answered. I wanted to know the time so that, you know, I can block it off kind of. So, but you just, you just answered my question. I wanted to block the time off, so I was thinking that way.
Okay, yeah, just, just keep those dates open, please.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, next item on the, excuse me, next item on the agenda is discussion of the library's strategic plan. I guess that, this is the first time we've seen this document. In its present form, anyway. So I don't, some of us saw it on the screen, but. Everybody leading for this?
Sure, sure. So the, what, what is in your packet was the most recent version of the plan that we received from Linda Austin, a consultant. So she sent this right after the, the last meeting with the trustees to discuss the plan. And so for those of you who were there, really the, the purpose of that meeting was to kind of fill out the right-hand side of the, the sheets of paper with the person responsible, is there additional budget needed, and then the timeline. So in looking at the timeline that's presented, we were as staff, a little concerned about the fact that it is really heavily weighted towards 2022 and a little bit less so in 2023 and not very much in 2024. So we took a look at that and you'll, and, and did move a number of things out into 2024 to, to balance that out a little bit more. And then I think there's, there's one section that we discussed yesterday where we're, we feel that an item is not, an action item is not under the, the correct objective to, to make that change, which was, can't find the right spot. Which part is that? Page four, thank you, Casey. Page four, the second objective there, item four, to use the knowledge of the social worker to train staff on how to reach underserved communities. We felt that that needed to be moved up under the first objective. So we would propose to make that change. And other than that, I think we feel that it's pretty much ready to go. I took a look through the current strategic plan, the one that we're finishing up at the end of this year. And in terms of things that are in that plan that weren't completed, that we might want to move forward and, and that isn't currently in the plan. And I would say everything that we didn't get to is in the plan, for the upcoming plan. Except perhaps the one thing is, we had hoped to be able to do a lot of evaluation of the changes that were made in services and programming and policy to become more accessible as part of our last year of this plan. But all the changes we made for COVID and the restrictions because of COVID have just made it really difficult to know and really assess some of those impacts. And so, but that's, I think that, you know, can easily move into this, into the new plan as well as we want, pretty much whatever we do, we like to take a look at the impact of that. Is it working, is it not? So, and there is evaluation certainly written into the current strategic plan, especially around some of the special initiatives, like the library social worker, the early literacy emphasis we'll be doing. So there is evaluation written in about that as well. Board engagement is certainly part of the new plan and that is an area that perhaps we were not as successful with in the current one as we wanted to be. So, but that's moving forward. And then the use of, and being able to present library information in languages other than English. So we do have a, a general introduction to the library, kind of our library basics brochure has been translated into Spanish and I think library card application as well. But there's certainly room for expansion of that, but that's also written into the new plan. So I think that, I think that we're not missing anything from the 2020, or the current strategic plan that we didn't finish. I think it all pretty effectively moved forward into the new plan. And, and a lot of it is expanded on even further, so.
Thank you, Amy. It's good to have things balanced out, but, you know, actually going through this, it's like, kind of hate to think about anything being three years out. And I've been talking about this, the new infrastructure plan, you know, 10 years out. When are we going to see that, so next week? Can't wait. Anyway, any questions, comments on the strategic plan? I'm sorry.
How often do we do the strategic plan? Is this a yearly thing then?
Well, this is, it'd be like three years, it's a three-year plan. But we, we do updates along the way, make adjustments if we need to.
Just, just to add to what Amy said about, Amy, as you shared about the different languages and how we have moved it into the new strategic plan, the DES Subcommittee, Outreach Subcommittee, we are working on a few things. And I will share as we, as we kind of have a concrete plan. But we are sharing about how to reach and have a few, maybe announcements or something like that or signages or something like that in different languages other than what we have already. But I will keep you all posted as we have our plans structured.
Thank you, Mel, Mika. Next item on the agenda is board training.
Okay. So Paige is going to be my technology expert. Showing screens. So what we're going to go over today would be, as we went through the strategic plan and that whole process, it became really evident that even as trustees, you know, we have the same challenges with having the trustees really know all of the services that we're providing. So if it's a challenge for the trustees, how do we expect members of the community to know, right? And if the board is going to be part of our engagement efforts, we wanted to go back and give some reminders of things. I'm, I'm sure that these have all appeared in, you know, in directory reports and, and other things as we implemented them. But when you look at the list, it's a lot and so it's, it's hard to remember. So just some quick reminders that we do have museum passes that can be checked out. We added board games and puzzles during COVID and those have proven popular. So, you know, puzzles are a thing where, you know, once you, once you put it together, then what do you do with it, right? I mean.
I know.
I mean, not everybody likes to redo puzzles, you know, tear them apart and do them over again.
You do much parting, but put them all you want.
Yeah, so this gives people a chance to get hold of those for free. Board games, kind of similar, like you want to invest in a board game without having played it. You might not like it, it might not be age-appropriate for your family, you know, it might be too hard, too easy, whatever. So this gives folks a chance to kind of test that out, see if they like it, you know, if you want to invest in it, or if you like to play lots and lots of different board games, then you don't have to invest those, get plenty in it. The guitars and ukuleles, that was something we did prior to COVID. For a while there, we weren't checking those out, but we are again. The Wi-Fi hotspots have certainly been a popular item, especially during COVID. And then we have the techno items. And so that's technology, you know, portable technology that's, you know, fairly easy to put into a case that we check out. So right now we have 51 items in the techno collections. Some of those are at Fairmont and some of them are at Eastern. But some of the items.
Question.
Yes, sir.
The museum passes, are they for specific museums?
Yes, so they're for the Putnam, the Figgy, Jordan American Heritage Center.
Children's.
Um, that's the children's museum, the, the zoo, the Niobe Zoo.
Symphony?
Apple Center.
Okay.
Symphony?
Yeah, and we do have some, we do have some symphony passes as well. So you can kind of check it out and then exchange it for a, a ticket to the symphony. So some of the things that we have, this is, you know, not complete, but gives a little bit of the variety of things for techno. So metal detector, the telescope has been really popular. The light therapy lamp is currently checked out. So again, you know, if, if somebody is, I know, experiencing seasonal depression, a lot of times a light therapy lamp can be something that's really helpful. But do you want to invest in that without knowing whether or not it's going to be effective for you? So this gives folks a chance to, to know that or.
A time limit on how long it can be checked out or does it depend?
They, those, these items check out for a week.
One week?
Yeah. We have a webcam, a label maker, if you're doing a project and you need to make lots of different labels, blood pressure monitor, document scanners. And then we have some coding robots, so that, you know, can generally used by, you know, kids kind of, you know, learning, they can kind of program them and they do things. So those are pretty popular as well.
Multiple of these? I mean, are there, is there just one of these?
Generally, there's just one.
Okay.
There might be some different brands of the same thing as we, you know, purchase. I think there's more than one scanner. purchase, I think there's more than one scanner, because I think we purchased one first at Fairmont and then at Eastern, when we started to have items there, you know, we bought, we bought a scanner, but it's probably a different model and works a little differently. So it is really a challenge to keep these items up to date because they need to work with current versions of Windows and things like that for people's computers. So, so there is some challenge keeping everything up to date.
Are these in the catalog?
They are in the catalog. And then we do retro techno. So you know, part of our purpose with the techno library is to let patrons kind of, you know, experience and try out new things without having, having to buy them or, you know, so that they know what they, whether or not they would like it, you know, is it useful to them? But then again, sometimes we need old technology. So we have a cassette player that can be checked out. We have a turntable. Which I guess those are, you know, those are popular again, but.
Yeah, I know, fine, go on, mine are.
Yeah, the carousel slide projector, including the carousel, in case you come across a collection of slides, you have no way to look at those anymore. And portable typewriter. So, yes. So, and then again, not retro, but important, those Wi-Fi hotspots.
Yeah, scanner up there, you mentioned the document scanner, but there's also automobile code scanner?
Yep, we have one of those.
If you check engine light comes on.
Oh, really?
Amy, I've checked out GoPro ones a long time back.
Yep, yep, we do have that GoPro camera still there.
I did that, yeah.
And then some of the services that are, I think sometimes people aren't super aware of. So we do have a fax service that is free at any of our locations. The notary service is free at any location, but appointments are needed. We don't always have somebody who's there, you know, in any given building at any given point who can help you. So we really do encourage patrons to make those appointments or at least call ahead to make sure there's going to be somebody there who can help them. Book a librarian. So that's a service where a lot of folks use it when they have a new tablet or something like that, a new phone and they're having trouble downloading the library app or the, the Libby app to listen to ebooks or e-audiobooks, those kinds of things. They can set an appointment with one of our librarian staff for that assistance for 30 minutes. So that's pretty popular, especially, you know, like I said, around Christmas when people get new devices and things like that. A lot of times folks have trouble getting those set up and can't figure anything out to that. But they can be used for, for anything. So if somebody's working on a research project and they need help finding information, anything like that, they can, they can call and reserve that time. So senior outreach, this is one of those things that we, we do that is not super publicized because it's not we don't go to individual seniors' homes, but it'd be any of the residential areas. And not necessarily like a nursing home, care facility, but assisted living. And even to, you know, like places where there are senior retirement apartments. So our reach goes there, they bring materials that folks can check out. And then we also have some book clubs in those communities as well. The kit programs, those continue to be super popular. Angie can tell us about that. She's probably put together more craft kits for end-on programs than she might want to remember. But that's been really popular and we started that during the pandemic. When we were really closed and couldn't do any in-person programming. So the staff put together kits of, you know, like a craft kit, right, with a specific project in mind. And then Eeyore Live did a program and showed everybody how to put that together and let people share what they were doing or recorded that same video so that people could again, you know, kind of follow along with the craft as it was going on. So those have been super popular and I hear that the kit in this program, kids are being put together kind of as we speak. So those are big programs for Christmas.
This, for the senior outreach, would that also go to like KSI?
We do not go to KSI, but that doesn't mean we couldn't do in the future.
No, I was just thinking, you mentioned residential, what I understood to be residential.
Right, yes.
KSI and there's like milestones.
Yeah, right now we don't go, we're going to the residential facilities. Yeah, so. We are a patent and trademark resource center. That's in a program run through the federal government, through the patent office there. So there is a patent and trademark resource center in each state, at least one in each state. And so right now we are the only one in Iowa. So, and I just copied directly from the patent trademark resource center website to just show like this is what we do. So this is, the resource center is an electronic resource. So we have a computer, no, hang on, Casey.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We have a computer, don't worry about it, don't have to go back. So we have a computer in, right now it's in special collections, that provides us access to some of the databases that people would want to do if they were doing a patent search. And then we have our information services staff. Two people kind of designated as lead on that who are kind of our experts. So if somebody needs information on how to search for a patent, we can help them get started with that. And then as part of that, the state library used to be the patent and trade library in Iowa. When they, as part of doing that, they maintained a database of Iowa patents and inventors. And so then when we took that over, they shared their database with us and we've continued to maintain that. So for students or anybody who's looking for Iowa inventors, they can search by name or they can search by county and find out, you know, what patents have, you know, come from, somebody living in a certain county or something like that. So this is available off of the library website. Lib guides is content that's created by our staff on certain topics, generally highlighting resources we have here at the library. So they're some of it's historical in nature. You can go ahead and click on that, Casey. So again, available from our website and if we scroll down, you can see all the different guides that are available. So some of them, again, like I said, are, are historical, but they try to emphasize resources that we have here at the Devonport Public Library. So business and entrepreneur resources. But career resources, comic books, you know, all those different kinds of things. And if you want to just like pick one, Casey. So these are the various device handouts that we have. So if somebody's got a read that very well, how do you, how do you use resources that we have to help you figure out how to use your, your computer and, and devices, things like that. So there's really a wide variety. Try the comic books, try try comics for all ages. So this talks about comics as a genre. And then I think if you pick like DC Comics, it gives you resources that we have and items that we have that people might be interested in. There's one for like DVDs or TV shows that we have in DVD that talks a lot about those to help folks figure that out. And then we also have some, like I said, that cover local history topics. There's one on George Davenport there. I know if you want to click on that real quick, Casey. So it, it gives links to the various blog entries that we've done over the years about George Davenport. There's a tab for photographs in the collection. All kinds of things like that to help people kind of give a one-stop shop for some of these topics that generally it occurs to us to do these things, but we get a lot of questions about them. And then archive space is a database that provides access to the archived manuscript collections. So special collections has been working on getting that all put together. And they're currently adding a lot of information to that. I think if you scroll down, you'll see the search box there. So if you want to, let's, what should we search for? Let's search for parks.
Here's an old word, is that where all the microfilm, micro feature are then?
No. Some of them will eventually get there, but like the newspaper microfilm, that's mostly in the catalog. So there are 132 results that have that word parks in it. So some of those things are, you'll, you'll show you, is it a collection level? Like we have a full collection from the Parks Department. We picked up a family Bible there. That Creek Park Lodge. As, and then as we go down, there might be individual items that are mentioned in these as well. Generally speaking, those individual items will be in one of the larger collections as well. So you can search on different levels of that as well. So you can just search for collections or you can search for all the items and things like that and find out what we have in our archive and manuscript collections. And know whether or not, and then get in contact with the staff to find out if, you know, more about information about the collection or come in and use those materials for research. And then QC Beats, so that's our local music database. Looks like we need to update the front page on that, but so the album covers will provide a link to the artist's album that they submitted. So if you want to just click on that one, Casey. You can download it. So if you decide you want to download it, you need to just put in your library card number. But otherwise this is a way for anybody, you know, anywhere in the, in the world to get some exposure to our local Quad City musicians.
In conjunction with
So yeah, so we do that in partnership with the RME, St. Ambrose University. And we're doing some things with Augustana now. And then there's a local DJ who's been in radio station, has been really kind of joined us just this last year. So to help kind of promote some of that. And I think that that is it unless anybody has any particular questions.
Definitely didn't know anything about three, four, seven, I must say.
I, I thought I was doing really good on the first slide.
I know. Down it all the way.
Amy, we have beautiful resources. No, we have beautiful resources and I, I after, and, and your presentation.
We have to turn the volume up here.
Oh, hold on.
We're okay, you're okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. No, Amy, we have such valuable resources and I started feeling like, and especially when I had so many parents that I met yesterday, last evening, when I was at Devonport Central. I started feeling, what if we have these into little canvas slides? And we could share it on Nextdoor and things like that, where people, you know, have the most visibility or our social media platforms, because it's so excellent and concise that people are going to, you know, really love it, I felt. I mean, there were so many questions and they got answered right now to what you showed us.
Okay. Back to the agenda, there's no other questions or comments. Okay, next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Tom, for a second.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Judy. So we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you, Alicia. Bye-bye.